Uh, open the meeting at six oh three P M.
Hang on, I'm going as fast as I can here to get this recording started. I got a streaming on one computer here. That's why my room's turning this way. I'm dealing with the streaming computer. I gotta stream it there, you hear? You know, and I don't even get an I T siphon. All right, we are good to go.
Alrighty, open the meeting at six oh three. First order of business is to approve and review and approve minutes from December fifteenth, twenty twenty. Look them over.
Yeah, they're great.
All right, is that a motion, Phil?
Yes.
All right, can I have a second?
Second.
Alrighty, roll call vote, uh, Phil?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
And I vote yes also, so it's unanimous. And we are on to financial statements.
I think Ashley just joined, just so you know.
Oh, great. Hi, Ashley.
Hi. Okay, so I emailed you out the financial report. Um, there's not too much of an update this month outside of the ordinary thing. So five warrants were reviewed and signed electronically totaling thirty-six thousand nine hundred three dollars and sixteen cents. Um, I did also share the general fund expense reports with you, so I'm happy to take questions if you have any questions about particular expense lines. Um, but there's no concerns at this point. Uh, Kristen and I actually just had a conversation today about how some account lines really would typically be spent down by now, and um, we are seeing where we have some savings, given the circumstances of the school year. So we're monitoring account lines, um, but again, happy to take questions if anyone has them. Okay, um, the two other things.
Just a couple, I, I did note, um, I did note this, that there was a couple of line items for salaries, uh, that seemed to be zeroed out for the year that, uh, for professional salaries, like curriculum and whatnot, so.
Yeah, so we're, we're testing out a few different things with payroll at the elementary schools this year, which sort of gives you a little bit of, of a false report on some of the salary lines. Um, you should see all administrative salaries at zero because we've encumbered the funds for the year for say my salary, Darius's salary, um, curriculum director, that kind of thing. And so we've done a P O, and then every time we do payroll, the year-to-date number changes because we post the payroll. Um, the teachers you actually won't see posted yet because we're trying to get that processed through the database. So just sort of some testing things that I'm doing to try to get payroll to run a little bit more smoothly and efficient, and to automatically generate some reports that we can then send to the town. Whereas right now, um, Brenda Antis, she's our payroll specialist, she has to manually do payroll for Conway and all of our elementary schools. And so then Jan gets, um, Excel spreadsheets and, you know, there's just room for error, and I'd really like to be using the database more. So that's why that stuff looks a little bit funny. Um, so two other things to update you on, school lunch, I've been giving you a month-to-month update. Um, we're currently at a positive balance of just over three thousand dollars in that account. Our net income for the year, so our revenue is not, um, exceeding our expenditure. So our net income is almost exactly the same as our current balance. Um, we're negative about thirty-one hundred, so we had a little bit of a surplus to start the year, so that's offsetting our negative net income right now. Um, an account that we've continued to talk about, and we'll talk about more as we get into F Y twenty-two budget. Um, but I have been giving you a monthly update there. And then, um, just a COVID update because we have started receiving reimbursements from the town. So so far, we've seen about thirteen thousand dollars back in municipal. I'm looking at Phil and laughing because I already know what's coming. Um, we've seen about thirteen thousand in reimbursements from the town, and those would go directly back to the expense lines that we prepaid them from, which is primarily school choice. Um, and then the town has about twelve thousand that they're paying directly to vendors because once, um, the town got their money, it was easier for them to sort of manage the payment rather than us pay it and then wait for funds back, so that's been nice. And then we still have some technology orders, which knock on wood, we heard that the Chromebooks are coming in this week. So we might, um, actually think they're shipping tomorrow, so we'll see them hopefully next week, so we'll get the rest of that cleared up. And, um, before Phil says anything, um, I have been in communication with Tom about the potential for additional funding from Municipal Cares Act. So he had said he wanted to sort of get through the first round of, um, reporting for the last quarter and see where everything was at, but that he did anticipate there would be additional funding to support the school. So Kristen and I have had a discussion already about some other possible needs. Um, and then, you know, Darius and I have sort of started talking about, and Phil, I think you brought this up a couple of times. Um, is there any way for those funds to help offset some of the deficits that we have? And, you know, I'm continuing to get the answer of no, 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 you can't do that. This isn't to supplement, um, revenue loss. And so we'll continue to talk about that and, and complain, and hopefully they'll start to change some things. Um, but, you know, I do think we'll see a little bit more COVID money coming in, and, and Kristen does have some good ideas, so that'll be helpful. So I have for now, and then we'll talk about budget in a little bit.
Okay. Phil, does that satisfy whatever you were fancy about?
Well, I mean, we can talk about it during the budget too, because that's really what it, what, you know, for, I mean, I, just to explain to, um, my friends and colleagues here, what, so the Cares Act is the amounts that the towns all across the country were given for COVID expenses in the very first COVID, whatever stimulus package. Um, and originally, the original deadline for spending all that money was, uh, this past December thirty-first. But then on December twenty-eighth or whatever, they passed a new, uh, stimulus, and they extended that, that deadline till this year. Uh, till, till December thirty-first of this year. So, and at that time, Conway still had a balance in its Cares Fund of something like eighty thousand something dollars. And we have had, we've been blessed in that, that we've, our, our, our emergency services have spent very little of it. Um, you know, versus like, so, so Deerfield, on the other hand, they, you know, they spent all of their Cares Act money. And, I mean, they, they, they kind of had to. They had first responders that had to be quarantined in hotels and things like that. And so we haven't had anything like that. Actually, our, our ambulance in town is, has not yet, um, transported a COVID patient. Um, so, so, I get, what I'm saying is that there's this money sitting there, and if you don't spend it, you return it to the federal government. And so I'm, I, I, I'm just really trying to get focused on spending that money and not returning it to the federal government. And especially in like, if it can offset, um, assessment increases, that would be even like more beautiful. But it complicates things for spending it in the frontier part of it because, uh, our fellow towns can't participate, what, you know, um, we, we, we do a, we, we split expenses based on our regional, uh, population, student population formula, et cetera. So we can't split expenses if one of the towns, it, you know, it complicates things is what I'm trying to say.
Well, but I'm sure the school has, you know, extra cleaning costs and P P E and all of that, which have to be significant that we should be able to use that for.
And I, you know, and if, if the school doesn't use it, a lot of it's gonna get, I mean, we were prepared to be spent, we were gonna be sending back eighty for something thousand dollars.
We will use it.
Yeah, and so that's the thing, and if, and it, I, you know, and especially if we can use it to offset assessments, that's killing two birds or not, it's a bad phrase, but, um, that's that, you know, that, 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 that's, um, that's a good thing.
Even the HVAC cleaning, right? Did you guys clean your HVAC system?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, we've spent about fifty-five thousand, I think that's around what it's gonna come out to so far that the town will have contributed. A lot of that has been P P E, um, HVAC, and then a good chunk of it, probably at least twenty thousand is technology to get more Chromebooks and laptops and devices for teachers. Um, last we did an order of P P E, I wanna say in late November, early December, when we, when we thought the original deadline was December thirty-first. We were at a point where Meg Birch, our nurse leader, was sort of saying, we don't need any more P P E right now. We're in good shape across the district. Um, and so those pieces, I feel like we've done a really good job of planning and spending the money in a positive way. Um, and then the technology, I, you know, Kristen, I'm sure can come up with some things, but again, they're supposed to be COVID-related. But I know our I T director really did the best he could to get everything we possibly could get for one-to-one devices and then, um, teacher support for classrooms. Uh, so I think right now, there's two things we're looking at. Kristen's trying to look ahead to the spring, uh, to see what other outdoor learning types of things can we get, and even, you know, before the spring, like, can we put heaters outside and that kind of thing? Um, and then also the other thing is what Phil's talking about. Is there any way to offset some of the hardship that we're gonna face at the grammar school and at Frontier where Conway is impacted? And, you know, that's the big challenge, I think, right now, is the answers that we keep getting are no, you can't do that. Um, so hopefully they're gonna flip that switch if they continue to hear enough complaining from us.
The tents rentals too, right?
Yeah, yep. And we have tents right now.
We have tents up still, yeah. People are using them.
So that's all, so that's the mission set before you, spend that money.
Yeah, definitely. I would just think cleaning expenses alone would, would drag the budget right up, so, anyway. Um, alrighty, on to, we all signed the warrants.
I'll just pause to a moment to note, to note that it was just a little bit fun just to spend money that's not from the town, from the taxpayers.
True.
It's little, it was just, it was just a brief little bit of fun to even talk about that.
Yeah.
Sort of fun, and not real, but you know.
Right. Um, public comment, I know there was something sent in. I don't know that I have a copy of that. That was from. All right.
I also have it in front of me, Elaine.
All right, somebody wanna read it?
I'm just looking, I had it, where'd it go? There it is, okay. No, uh, wait. S E S public comment, that's for us as well? Yeah, oh yeah, I'm like, there it is, okay. Uh, this is from the F R S U thirty-eight Special Education Parent Advisory Council, the C P A C. Date of January tenth, twenty twenty-one. The F R S U thirty-eight C P A C would like to thank the members of this committee for their ongoing support of special education students. We hope that you will continue to give special education and other vulnerable earners the option to access in-person instruction regardless of what model is used for the rest of the school community. Thank you for your time, Ollie Johnson, co-chair, Aegis Serone, co-chair, Carrie Thurlo, secretary, and Crystal Brown, treasurer.
Great. They are always updating us, aren't they? But good to notice. Um, alrighty, on to unfinished business. Do we have an anti-racism and equity committee update?
No, we do not this time. Um, still need, you know, we, I kept it on the agenda, but the time coming out of vacation, they didn't have any new updates at that point, so they'll they'll be here in February to tell us what's going on this month.
Alrighty, and a COVID nineteen update.
Um, I guess the, 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 kind of the last, you're the last group to go out of this, in this cycle. Um, the COVID, you know, obviously we've been, we've been back this week. Um, our antigen testing is up and running. I mean, we've been trying to get that going, and we did start that up on Monday. Um, our, just, our school, how we did have to do a couple of antigen testing this week. Um, you know, for sick kiddos going home, and we were able to clear them on the way out the door, which is, I must be, um, it must be nice for parents. Um, the other, uh, update is that Shelley and I are looking into, as I drag you into it, Shelley went, I'm looking into, which Shelley and I are looking into, um, the pool testing has been released by, by Desi. Um, in a six-week trial period where they are going to pay for pool testing. And so what pool testing basically is, and I'll give it the, the way I give it, it's kind of, um, maybe Conway's will like it. But basically you spit in a bucket, you test the bucket. Okay, but they're really doing the swab testing, and they put the swabs into one thing, and they test the, they test, so they'll be able to test cohorts, and you get to choose your cohorts. So we could do something like the entire first grade is tested at a group, they test that, they test that grouping, and then you know if you have a COVID case in your classroom. Um, and you do it, you know, you have a, it's done over forty-eight hours, so if we do it on Monday, we'll know by the end of the day on Tuesday. And then if you get a positive test, you can use the antigen testing that we already have to figure out who in the class has COVID, if anyone. You know, I mean, obviously if we were to be doing this all year, we wouldn't have a positive case, because we haven't had a positive case in the school yet. So, um, or maybe you had somebody that, you technically, because of our safety standards, you could have somebody be positive, be in the classroom, get through COVID, and no one ever knew because they didn't pass it, pass it around, so, um, that's quite possible too. So this is what the state does, they set this up for six weeks. We, we had applied, they gave us a really short window, they let us know last Friday about it. And then they said you had all, there was an information session on Tuesday, if you're interested, you had to apply by Thursday. So, you know, we submitted that we were interested because anything for free, like, you know, as Phil would say, anything for free we'll take. Um, and, um, so that's basically the rollout. However, after the six weeks, so what's the catch, right? So the catch is that the companies obviously aren't gonna do this for free. Um, and the state's not gonna pay for it forever at this point, perhaps we can get some pressure to change that, but after the first six weeks, it comes down to five dollars a test a week. So if you do the rough numbers on that, based on your population, if Conway has, how many students? Chris, I mean, let's just say we have a hundred and fifty people in, in person, that's gonna cost us around nine thousand dollars to do testing for the remainder of the year, um, after that six-week period. So across the district, you know, and we could use the Care Act money to pay for that probably. So I think it's, it might be very easy for Conway to be able to do that. Um, across the district, we have some other schools that are far more financial hardship, and it's gonna be, and without having cares money, so. You, we applied for this. If we get it, we'll do the six weeks of it, and then near the six, in the six-week portion, we'll start talking about if this is something, how's it going? Is it disruptive? Is it worthwhile? Meanwhile, back at the ranch, teachers hopefully will be vaccinated in that six-week period, so you're actually number, you know, your numbers of that may come down, and the climate may change slightly, and the question, will we wanna be doing pool testing just for children? Um, and I've kind of said this to people, they, right now it's kind of foggy about what happens after teachers are vaccinated, because students aren't. Um, you know, and there's no vaccination for children, um, on any horizon for this, at least this school year that I know of.
Well, down to sixteen.
Down to the age of sixteen.
Right.
Right.
So you're some of your high school coolers again, yeah.
Yep, uh, but for, for, you know, Conway Grammar School speaking, so. We, you know, we don't know where, how that's gonna change when teachers get vaccinated, how that's gonna change the classrooms, how that's gonna change, I mean, we're prepared to kind of finish the year in the, in the setup we're in. Um, but, you know, what's gonna be allowed, what's not gonna be allowed, that kind of stuff. And so it's kind of, to me, I, I might say my planning, I call it, there's kind of this gray fog at that point, because there's no, they're not telling us what they're gonna do. Is it children, are children gonna be basically herd mentality? Or, you know, are we gonna continue with, you know, this, or should we be doing pool testing? So those are the things we're gonna have to figure out over the next, our next challenge, and we keep on getting these new fun challenges. So that'll be one of our next challenges to figure out how do we plan through that, because there is no path set, and we haven't been given guidance from above. Because I don't wanna call Desi above us, so let's just say that kind of guidance. Um, but, um, you know, we don't really know how, um, how, how it's gonna figure, um, go out as well. So, you know, it'll be kind of real-time decision-making, and then obviously we have to come back to you um, regards to if we're gonna find ten thousand dollars and how we're gonna do that, it's gonna have to be a school-wide decision. Going forward, so that's kind of, any questions on pool testing or?
I think there's a vaccine in the pipeline for kids.
I heard they started the trials, but as you, as most children vaccinations are, they do them far longer trials and, you know, and given, I would say also, given the fact that the effects of COVID on children are so low, much lower, there's no, the rush is gonna probably be reduced in the sense of if they, if they had the same kind of issue older adults are having with it, you'd probably see them rushing it along faster, but the risk reward, right?
I just got my second vaccine Tuesday.
So did you get sick afterwards?
Uh, no, I got.
Do you mind telling us about your medical history?
No, I, uh, my arm wasn't even sore. I was very tired yesterday, um, but no, some people had some mild body aches, or fatigue is the biggest one. And it basically was lasted like from late yesterday until this morning, and was gone. So, but.
Well, you're working your arm.
Yeah.
Has there, has there been, for you, has there been like a reduction in just sort of the normal daily micro panics that come to everybody in this pandemic, just when your mask slips below your nose and this and that? And just, is there, is there just like a little bit less of a, of a fear factor?
I think definitely, and, uh, well, although I gotta give it two weeks to be fully, fully on board. They say two weeks after the second dose, but yes, I feel a little more invincible definitely than I did, because, you know, one minute you live in sort of oblivion, and the next minute you're like, oh my God, I went in the grocery store, I'm gonna have it, you know what I mean?
Yeah, 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 I do know what you mean.
Wait, do you feel a little bit better than all of us?
I feel a little bit better. I do. I think it's gonna be, everybody's gonna have it soon. I mean, they, I mean, it's just sort of stacked up, ready to roll, like, let's get, get it rolling. You know, I only lucked out because, uh, River, my counseling center is part of Maho Leo Hospital, which is a small hospital, and they got enough for all of us. So, you know, I have a friend at Cooley that, you know, still hadn't gotten it after I had my second, and she does direct client care, so. Because they're part of M G H, so it's gotta trickle down, takes, looks, it's a little longer to trickle down, but.
Administrators have to get it first.
I know.
Those are funny jokes, I'm sorry.
I was like, oh, I, I, you know, kept waiting and waiting, but then they're like, okay. Anybody in, in the system, and I was like, sign me up. But definitely the people who have direct client care went first, but it went really fast once we went, got going. And I've heard of very few side effects. Yeah, so, alrighty, so we are on to budget proposals. That must be fun to make a COVID budget. You've been making budgets since you got here, Shelley, haven't you?
I don't think that stopped.
I don't think you have either.
Um, so I did share with you the complete budget, and then also the narrative, uh, which Darius is gonna pull up on his screen for us to look at. Um, I wanna start with the general announcement that this is a draft, it's our first draft. There's not been a lot of creative thinking put into this yet to how we can reduce our number, because we do recognize it is an increase that's higher than where we want to be or need to be. Um, but at the same time, we wanted to give you represent, uh, representation of what the actual numbers look like right now. Um, so we started with a level service approach to generate the first draft, uh, and that included the increases per contract obligations for cost of living adjustment and our steps, also anyone that had, um, column movement. So if they had, were moving from a master's to a master's plus thirty, or whatever the next column is in the contract, that's taken into consideration here. Um, and then we also built in for, uh, non-union staff such as custodians, cafeteria, central office, secretaries, the, that kind of personnel, um, to get a raise as well, typical cost of living adjustment. Um, and then I did look at non-salary accounts to make sure that over the past few years, if we've been really over an account, uh, looking at why we were over, um, and making adjustments so that moving forward, we can continue to meet our needs. Um, and then we also built in a three-and-a-half percent increase to insurance-related expenses, which really only pertains to central office expenses that Conway pays a portion of, um, because the other insurances and things are paid through the town for school employees, but there was a slight increase there. Um, and then the next step was to look at the revolving accounts, school choice, school lunch, early childhood, and then special education to make sure that the expenses that we have been paying from those funds could continue to be paid in the future. Um, so looking at all of those pieces, we are at a six-point-two-nine percent increase right now, um, which is, we know, too high. Um, the total numbers are there for everyone to take a look at and see. Um, and then I'm gonna go ahead and explain, there are really three big factors impacting this. Um, two of them are COVID-related, uh, so our early childhood program, you know, we've been talking about this since last May. Uh, the program does not look the same that it did in the past. Uh, we have less students in the program, and that means we're generating less revenue, however, our expenses have not changed. Um, so we did move twenty-five thousand off of the early childhood revolving fund onto the general budget for next year. Uh, the second is similar theme here, school lunch. Um, we are bringing in some revenue from state and federal reimbursement for meals served. However, it's not our typical revenue stream, um, but again, expenses have not changed. So I anticipate by the end of F Y twenty-one, we're gonna have to move some expenditures, including wages, onto this year's general fund, uh, which I do believe we have savings to cover, but going into next year, you know, I know we've had this conversation about Conway's school lunch programming, program, um, either running in a deficit year to year, or that we don't necessarily believe that the program should have um, funding to fund itself, but I think we're gonna be in a really difficult position next year, because we're talking about thirty-five thousand dollars worth of wages that we won't have revenue to cover. Um, you know, obviously if circumstances change and we can increase enrollment in the preschool program, or if lunch can go back to some normalcy, you know, we can move these changes back onto those revolving funds once we know more. And I do expect that the timeline for the budget process, never fails, every time I'm talking. Um, the timeline for the budget process, I think, is going to be much longer. I think we all know that, and that town meetings are gonna get pushed. So we have some time to work through some of these challenges, but again, I thought it was best for us to look at the real numbers right now. Um, so those two pieces come out to about three percent, uh, almost twenty thousand is one percent increase. Uh, so those pieces alone, um, we're looking at about three percent increase of our six-point-two-nine. Then the last piece is also something that we talk about in years that it comes up. Uh, we do have a teacher who's retiring, and the retirement benefit, we do anticipate to be between eighteen and twenty thousand. Um, so I did add that back in, it's an expense that we did not have in twenty-one because we didn't have anyone retiring. So, you know, this is one of those things that we talk about, should there be money there as a placeholder? Or shouldn't there be money there as a placeholder every year? Because when we have an instance like this where we have to pay out, um, it's a quick one percent increase for one staff member. So, you know, that's what we're looking at there. So between those three pieces, um, if we could not have those issues right now, we'd be under a three percent increase, which is really a good spot for us to be in. Um, and then I'm just telling you here, one minor increase to non-salary expenditures, which is forty-five hundred dollars. We've consistently been over in some of our network technology software lines every single year, so I think it's best to sort of write that account. It's actually a couple of different accounts, but they're all related to the same thing. You know, and let's make sure that we're truly budgeting for what our expenses are, but it's such a minor increase that it doesn't have a big impact. But it's one of the more significant non-salary changes. Um, so I know I've given you a lot of information, um, I'm happy to take questions, and, you know, definitely, as we continue to go through this process, you know, for February, we'll be looking at, hopefully having some more information, maybe even, um, the governor's first proposal of the budget, and, you know, talking more closely about how we bring that number down and how we get through some of these challenges, um, and have a, hopefully a smaller number for you next time. But I'm happy to take questions. Or comments.
So the one retirement is a one percent difference in the budget?
That's correct.
Well, can you imagine if we had two or three?
It, but the irony, the irony, Elaine, is how, how, how much we tried to, you know, deal with this through, 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 you know, negotiations, and and I guess we're on year, what is this, year eighteen, year nineteen, right? The counting, the clock is counting, but, um, but those, the, you know, the, there, how many more generations of school committees are still gonna have to explain this budget line item at town meeting, you know? But yeah, we did our best, and see, see what we can do next time. But it's interesting that we, how much time we put into this, this specific issue, and then here it is right away. And I don't, you know, the person, the person that's do that is do every penny. And I don't forget, you know, the person, the person that's do that is do every penny of it, in my opinion. I don't regret that person, uh, uh, anything. But just the way that we do it, the, the whole lump sum concept is, uh, is, is rough.
Who's retiring?
Um, our occupational therapist, Mary Gilman.
Oh, okay. Alrighty. Any more questions about the budget and we appreciate it. It's a, a draft. Because a lot's gonna go on in the next few months, I have no doubt, so.
Between Shelley, between now and next month, we're supposed to get the governor's numbers and it's supposed to firm up a little?
I mean, I, I talked to um, Natalie Blay not long ago, our, our state representative and um. You know, I love it. She might not be Conway's, is she?
Yes, she is.
She is, okay. You know, and she said they're, they've been in session about a lot of things, but budget is certainly not one of them. You know, they've gotta get through. The inauguration and see what's gonna happen there, so. You know, I, she also said he has a, it's in the constitution that there's a date that the governor's supposed to have the budget out by, but. You know, all timelines are messed up.
He says he's gonna meet it though. He's the one that kicks off the process by putting out the cherry sheets and the, wha- whatever and his numbers, so I don't know.
I mean, I think the big things are trying to see what's coming from the federal government. You know, what is gonna be the stimulus package to the states and then how to react off of that.
And even if he puts out numbers, you know, the house is not gonna jump on it right away anyway, so I, I imagine it, it will be. A while before we see anything real.
And I said this to other school committees, we, we want this process to take longer. Because the, uh, the, all the unknowns that we just talked about even earlier with COVID and what school looks like next year and that kind of stuff. Um, you know, and with, you know, we're in communications with the town regarding this, this Phil's here. Um, but basically the, you know, we, we don't wanna wrap this thing up quickly because we wanna see what the, what the. The model's gonna be like in September and how, where is, what is COVID or maybe it's gone, maybe everything's, you know, the sun is shining or maybe. We have some other expenses and that kind of stuff, cuz all those revolving funds we, we are gonna be based on that. And so we won't, you know, a better idea if we're gonna get income or not, so I'm just saying that's a, well, it's a, it's a patient. Budget season, that's why we really wanted to show a really transparent, this is where we're starting with all the. We didn't try to fix those numbers yet because how we fix them is gonna depend on how we get revenues as a town and as a state and yada yada.
Is like gym happening and music happening or have those people been laid off?
That's all happening.
It's happening, oh, wow.
Yeah, Mrs. M actually, uh, Ar- Arlene had the, all of her classes out for a nice hike today for phys ed, yeah, which was. Really, um, really great, but yeah, they're all happening.
Yeah, we have not done any layoffs, furloughs, cuts, you know, we, we really haven't even started to talk about any of that yet. Um, obviously, it's not something that we want to do unless we have to. Um, I think the only group of individuals impacted right now are the school lunch staff. Because when we are remote, they're obviously not serving lunch unless it's a pickup day. So their hours have been reduced, which is different than last spring when um, COVID first was around, we paid everybody. Um, which was a, you know, the right decision at that time, but we just can't continue to do that without the revenues coming in, so. They're the only ones that have had some reduced hours.
What about, uh, people with clubs and stuff like that? All those, you know, stipends that people get for after-school stuff?
After-school is not taking place.
So all those should be savings, right? Does that get, that must get budgeted?
Most of that is paid. If it's after-school programming, it's paid directly from the after-school revenue.
Okay. What about coaching and all, you know, all those? Drama club, all those kind of things.
About frontier?
Everywhere, yeah.
Um, some of them have been reduced, some of them have been canceled and some of them are trying to happen, so from coaching, depending if the sports happened. Um, the fall, you know, I'm not gonna go into a long deal, but fall sports, for example, the ones that didn't take place. The coach did, all the teams did try to do some things, we paid them a portion of their stipend. In, in doing that kind of stuff, the, you know, drama club and that kind of thing, they're trying to do a digital based one, so the, you know, they gotta. They have to continue to meet the, 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 what, what they're trying to do with these kids and then report that to the principal, but. There are some that are canceled and there's some that are, they're trying to do.
Yeah, I'm excited. The frontier is actually trying to, you know, have the ski club, so it's great for the kids and with transportation. So, it's nice for them to get out, less screen time.
From a parent's perspective here at the elementary school, like P E and art have, have been. Highlights both in person and when we're remote, um. You know, I, I can see my kids running around the house, you know, as a scavenger hunt to get exercise on a remote day. Whereas otherwise, they'd just be sitting there still in a quieter class. It's so great to have them. Get that time to get up and get moving in a social interaction with. Other kids, even though they're at home, so I, I think it's been a really valuable component, um, this year, so.
I have a question about vaccines, so I know the teachers are kinda pegged for February. Are they required to get the vaccine and does that impact the teachers that are now at home working? Are they gonna be coming back to school?
How does that work?
Those are.
Cornet's nest Denise, it's always the quiet ones that look like they're.
I'm gonna ask a question of you, let me hit you with the hardest one you've had in a couple of weeks. What's funny is we, we just, we had, had negotiations today with thirty eight and, um. And we, we talked about that brief, we just kinda talked about that as an issue that we're gonna have to tackle because.
Just right around the corner.
It is, it's gonna come around the corner and there is, um, I attended a, you know, a legal seminar. Where they talked about, there is a couple cases sitting in, in the, in the, in the. Uh, was it Superior Court or whatever court regarding unions and requirements of vaccination? I think it's a police union that is the, is the, is the one that's part of the, of that and they're waiting for. If they're going to do a hearing on it and if they will do it and if it will be timely or not, um.
Was the requirement, right? The flu vaccine?
I think it was the flu vaccine was, is what they were, is the case. Right, and so they're using that, that'd be the case law that we need to hear a hearing on that for case law for whatever, so anyway, so a lot of the stuff, there's a lot of unknowns on it. Um, and there's also a lot of, you know, we talked about a little bit today in, in the negotiations about, we weren't negotiating it, we were just talking. Um, you know, that, you know, what if, you know, what if people don't trust the vaccination? You know, I mean, you, you, is, are we as employers going to give, and remember, we can talk about this in executive session, so. Let's just talk about it broadly here because we don't wanna do that kind of thing, but, you know, um. You know, what, you know, are we going to allow, you know, what allowance are we going to have? If people are, are still concerned and don't believe the vaccination's gonna be, is safe or, you know, that kind of thing. Um, I said it's gonna, it's gonna come to some quarter of ugly head at some point as employers, we're gonna have to say you've been hired for such a position, so on and so forth. But what does that look like and what is the timing of that? Um, and then how are doctors going to react regarding notes? Cuz it comes down to doctor's notes and that kind of stuff, so there's a lot of loose pieces here and. I don't have the answer to what it can look like going ahead and, and what that means, if we're gonna require people to come back if, um, you know.
Not to ma- not to mention religious or faith-based objections.
Yep, correct, and, um, yeah, and so, I mean, I'd be, I'd be curious to, we will probably be looking at. What the other unions and are doing. As well, I mean, you have hospital unions, you have, you know, police unions, fire unions, you know, those kind of stuff and what's going on there and we, and we cross, you know, case law and that. And then also what do we, what do we wanna do as employers in our values and that kind of stuff, you know, I mean. In balancing that out and, because the question is, cuz I said, I mean, COVID's not going away. It's, it's now, it's gonna be part of our, uh, our database of annual flu vaccines. They, you, you, one of the strains in there will be COVID, it'll be the year, cuz COVID nineteen is by the year, so it'll be COVID twenty one or COVID twenty two or COVID twenty three. This is what we think, and so it'll be the future years, that the same type of thing is going to be out there, and so whatever we do, we're gonna have to be. Planning long-term and that kind of stuff, so. Yeah, it's a, it's an excellent question, these where, there's no way answering on that yet, but again, another one of those. You know, how do we affect this year versus next year, you know, um, yeah.
Good stump the, stump the superintendent, that place, stump the superintendent.
Exactly, that's easy to do.
But the, the, Denise, the, the four-town boards of health did put out a memorandum, I think, days ago. Laying out there, the anticipated vaccine rollout in our county and for our four towns. And they anticipate April for, for general public, which is where I fit in, so I, so the bottom of the line should start to get. Moving in April, they say.
Well, the state side is saying February for teachers, but I don't know what that means.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're, they're, they're head of school committee members.
We just, we just need them to give Franklin County the doses, cuz I really, in talking with Carolyn Ness in the county, the county's ready to go. Getting them, did you, you know, if they, you say, hey, listen, let's divide it up. You know anybody, just give us our, give us our county doses, we'll take it from there, thanks.
Did you hear Alaska is like the most vaccinated state right now? Cuz they did, like they, and they were, they're taking them out by snowmobile and sled and. But they, they were like ready to hit the ground running and ran. I mean, it's.
I don't understand why we don't have just huge tents set up and people are getting vaccinated. I guess we don't have enough people, is that the, to give the vaccines?
Well, next week to let stadiums opening up.
I heard that.
Yep, for first responders and then they, they anticipate to keep it rolling, so. It, I think it's gonna go fast once it gets rolling.
But can you imagine the politics in like a city of Worcester? About, you know, what, what, you know, first responder group gets it first, how do you do first responder groups? And just the politics and the unions and the, I mean, just in the infighting and, you know, under, under-desk deals and. You know what I mean? Like, you could just, you know, I don't know.
See, what they're starting to say now is like, forget this, like, there's so much vaccine waiting, this tier thing. You know, yes, you wanna get certain people first, but we have so much waiting, like, let's just get it to who wants it, you know? So, we'll see what happens with that.
And that division's already taken place a little bit, just with the first responders and our, I mean, Con- Conway's, you know, police, fire. Uh, B M S are just getting their, theirs now, this week, last week and next week.
Yeah.
Yeah, o- other towns have gotten it before our town. It ha- it has been duly noted.
Alphabetically.
Yeah, I guess so.
If you've had COVID, you're supposed to wait three months, I think it is. So you gotta keep that in mind, if you've done positive.
So, if you don't really, if you have it, you don't really need it, right?
Uh, you want it, but you, you, you do have immunity for a period of time. I forget what time they're saying now, but not forever. But, anyway. Alrighty, so we're on to gifting student-specific equipment to students new school. That's a mouthful.
Kristen, are you talking about this or you want me to chime in?
I'm sorry, I'm going between screens, um, oh, um, I don't mind, Shell, um. We had a student, um, who left Conway Grammar School and went to another school. And there is a specific piece of equipment that the student needed, needs. That we purchased six or seven years ago. Um, the school has asked if, if the piece of equipment could go with the student. Um, you know, we talked about, could the school purchase it? We were gonna ask for that, but it's really of. No street value whatsoever. It's just, so we were wondering if the school committee would allow. Conway Grammar School to gift the piece of equipment to the, to go with the child to the, to the school.
It's a gift to the child or is it a gift to the school?
Well, I. Um, I'm, I'm hoping we can write it in a way that it's a gift to the child in case the child comes back to, back to the district. Shelley, what do you think about that? Sorry, Shell, I didn't talk to you about that.
No, I think that's fine.
Do we need a vote? Yes, we need a vote.
Alright, so moved.
Second. Uh, roll call, Phil?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
And I, me, I'm a yes also, alrighty. So you'll look into whether it can go directly to the kid?
Yeah, it's, it's a law, if people are wondering what the heck we're doing here, like, it makes sense, it has no real value, why don't we just give it? But we can't give away public material without you voting that, so in case someone's scratching your head at home.
Yep. Alrighty, we're on to reports. Uh, I do not have a report, uh. Superintendent, we got your report. Do you wanna tell us about it?
Um, just a couple of quick ones, um, I wanna welcome, uh, Jeffrey McDonald is our new food service director. He's coming up for us from U Mass, um, food service. And he did able to work a week before break, um, with Mary to get some coverage there, uh, some training and that kind of stuff, and so. Um, he's doing, he was getting the ground running and doing a fine job, so we're excited to have him aboard. Um, I do wanna mention that, Kristen, you talking about M C A S, was that on your report?
Well, you go right ahead, Darius, yeah.
No, that's all I got.
Well, the food at U Mass, I heard was good, so that should be good, right?
There you go. So I have a thing, I was gonna talk about M C A S, but I'm gonna let Kristen do it.
Okay.
Cuz I gotta do it four other times.
Okay. Well, and D A gave us twenty five thousand dollars, that was nice.
No, they didn't.
No, they didn't.
Oh, okay.
I was all excited.
Alright, well, it still benefits our kids, so, alrighty, on to you, Kristen. Oh, you're muted.
You're gonna mute them.
Couple of quick things. We have, uh, completed installation of the ultraviolet lighting through the HVAC system air handlers, so that, that was great. Um, we, we, uh, our lease was up for our copiers and printers, so, um. We just last week received new copiers and printers, um, which we feel like it's going to be a cost savings because we have a whole contract and. And, you know, repairs and all of that will be taken care of within this contract, so we're excited about that. And then M C A S update, um, which is this year, all students, well, students in, in grades three th- through eight. Will be taking a shortened M C A S, um, it'll be a shortened time and, um. They'll take a portion of each M C A S test, um. So I'm stumbling on my words, isn't it? Sorry. Um, the, uh, accountability will not. We, oh, my goodness, dear, let me start over again. I'm so sorry. During M C A S time for grades three to eight, the department will significantly reduce the testing time for the students. Through a session sampling approach, in which each student will take only a portion of each M C A S assessment in each subject. This modified M C A S administration will preserve the validity and reliability of the test at the school, district and state levels. When combined with other data points, this approach will provide meaningful diagnostic data at the individual student level. Accountability relief will be given. The commissioner will not name or recommend to the board any new underperforming or chronically underperforming districts or schools. In the upcoming school year, um, so. We appreciate the M C A S data points and, uh, and, you know, we will make it. As least stressful as we can for the children. The children will have to be in person to take the M C A S, but we have a hundred percent. Uh, in-person students in grades three, four, five and six, so we, we don't have to worry about that in terms of kids who are remote. And, um. Uh, most of our students are back four days a week. Our last, um, group, which will be the fifth grade, it's the biggest, will be coming back. February first, and at that point, all of our students will be back four days a week, and it's going very well. We, we have really tight, 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 tight. Protocols with cohorts and masking and, and, um, hand washing and, um. Yeah, masking, yeah, well, so we're, we're doing well, um. I think in general, people are nervous about the pandemic, but, um, I'm feeling all things are going very well. Kids are so happy to be in school. I can't say that.
Kids are gonna be ahead of most of them, I think, cause they've been able to be in. So our kids.
Yeah, I could, I could give like a applause to Kristen and various and the whole administrative team that has pulled off managing the model. That's the community, you know, a, a large percentage of the community. Made it happen. Thank you.
Never mind our families that can actually then like work when their kids are in school without trying to juggle tasks. That's amazing. Amazing.
Kristen, do you anticipate more busing needs? What'd you say? Alright, do you anticipate more busing needs now that the kids are starting to all go back every day?
No, I've reached out, I've reached out to several parents. A funny thing has happened. I've reached out to several parents, um, most of the bussers and any of the kids are enjoying their parents bringing them.
Yeah, they do. I'm included.
I'm sorry Denise, so sorry.
Riding the bus though.
So sorry. We picked up more kids on the buses though, as we've gone on, but we've got, we've got more space.
Okay. Why is frontier? So are the other schools following suit in terms of kids going back? Like for four days or all the schools are different?
The schools are different. So, um, it's interesting. Well, it has to do with, each school has its own problems with each, with every model. And so, um, you know, they, right now at the middle school, they, they're still only at two days a week. High school, two days a week. They're looking to expand that. But now it's hard to change over semester. So you're not gonna change a week before semester ends and then, you know, final exams, that kind of stuff. So they're gonna look to do that in the following semester, um, to do increase. It also has to do with spacing and class sizes. They're different because they're, the way schedules are worked for the secondary. Um, the other elementaries are also increasing time. Deerfield's at four days a week. They started out on Monday. Uh, Wheatley is doing a transition in, uh, four days a week. I think they'll be full four days a week next week of all their grades. I think some of their, I'm not just saying, I know, the younger grades started this week. They started doing two, a transition period where they brought a couple of classes, classes back for four days. And then the following week, bring the rest back. And then Southern is still, is still at two days a week, but they have their, um, vulnerable learners, which is, is, is a much larger number than, um, which is over 50 that are in four days a week. So it's kind of a mixed model because of the amount of vulnerable learners that they've kind of done it that way. So it's a little bit different in each building. It was also, we approached the, that second phase by working with the staffs of each building. And, and, you know, this is how, you know, working together, how we can do it and kind of rolling it out. It, it's been successful. I mean, it was, it was a lot of negotiation, not like heavy negotiation, but negotiation with individuals and making people feel comfortable and that kind of stuff. And, um, I'm, I'm pleased and, and I know when Michael just made that compliment to us, I also wanted, it goes right down. It goes all the, through all the way to our teachers, through instructional assistants and everybody else who works in our schools because, um, we're up and running. You know, and I'm not gonna wood, I've been doing it all the time, you know, for as long as we can. And we've been able to do it where our districts have not been able to. And it, it really is a, it's the, I'm not saying those aren't trying, but you know, we were able to take what our situation was and make it happen. So.
Alrighty, do we have any other business? Do we need executive session? I don't think we do, do we?
No. Elaine, there is a business in the, uh, in the, uh, unanticipated matters arising in the last 48 hours exception to the agenda. And that's the, um, which I've been asked to present to this school committee tonight from our town clerk, um, Lori Lucier, and actually also from the former town clerk, Jenny Nolton. Who both wrote an email that, um, requesting, requesting the use of the school gymnasium for the nonpartisan town caucus. On, which is, which they want on Monday, March 1st at 7:30 PM. Um, which for, for 25 to 35 people. And the room is rated for, I forget how many, 200 something or whatever, I believe. So, that's what, so, whatever. I know the board of health, it was involved in the request and I, but that, for, for legal notice purposes, they can't wait to the February meeting of the school committee. So.
They don't wanna try to do it remote?
Well, the thing is that it's, um, they, they're, what, what most, most towns have dropped this 200 years ago. And, and do it by nomination papers. But we, we actually have done this every year without fail since 1767. And so, I mean, this, this, it's a nonpartisan tradition that predates the Republican and the Democratic parties by 50 years and.
Yes, I've dragged many, many a person out of their home in a cold February night to show up to be one of the 25. Yes.
Jenny, Jenny wrote a long thing about how in her 40 years as town clerk, she's only ever received nomination papers um, outside of the town caucus format, like five or six times. That this is how you get all your candidates. And then people find out that, that nobody ran at town caucus, then they submit write-in papers or whatever. But that this is how the town functions. And, um, to, to lose it would be a shame. So I don't really know how to handle it or how the administration and the school committee wanna handle it, but I have been asked to bring it to the school committee's attention and, um, and seek out an answer. So.
I, I don't, I, you know, I can, Kristen, you can kind of chime in, but given, I mean, we're in a different world of understanding COVID than we were six months ago when we shut everything down and that kind of thing. I, I think that the building being used that night poses little to no risk to our students and faculty the following morning. Um, we've learned that COVID is, you know, not sitting on surfaces like transmitted in that way, you know, and so basically as long as we, you know, Kristen puts together that, you know, we, we clean that bathroom and the general area gets mopped down. I think we're gonna be, I think it's, we're more than, I think we're more than comfortable with allowing, as long as the board of health is allowing that, that level, that size of gathering at that time.
Sounds good to me.
Phil, could you please repeat the date and time?
Monday, March 1st.
It's like eight o'clock. It's late.
Yeah, it's seven thirty. I'm not sure what time, but it's seven thirty or eight. And traditionally, traditionally it lasts like less than an hour.
Yeah.
And then, um, you know, I don't, um, that maybe the, 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 something can be worked out with extra cleaning, whatever, whatever might be deemed advisable. I don't know, but the town can help with that. And this is what COVID, I, I don't know whether COVID could help with that. The, the COVID expenses could help with that too, probably cleaning for this. So.
Yeah, it's not a, again, it's not a big cleaning. If you, if you really break it down, it, um, bathrooms, I look at the bathrooms as the only thing that has to be sanitized. Everything else, you know, an aerosol COVID would be dead if it hit the floor by the time the next occupants hit the building. So, um, you know.
We could, could have people bring their own chairs, Phil.
Yeah, I guess.
BYOC. Anyway. Alright, we'll figure that out, but it sounds like it's a go. Alright, anything else before we get a wrap? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Sure. Yes.
Second?
Second.
Alrighty, do I roll call to adjourn? Uh, Phil?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Yes.
Michael?
Yeah.
Ashley?
Yes.
Alright, me too. Thank you, everybody.